Okay, it's Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. We're going to start the Town of Sangerville Board of Selectmen meeting, and we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Before I go to item two, anybody who was looking to hear the recording of the last meeting, we apologize, the recorder was not functioning, but it looks like we're back up and running. Item two, approval of the minutes, May 20th, 2020, Select Board meeting, and June 3rd, 2020, Select Board meeting.
You can't approve May's.
Motion to...
Table.
Table, May 20th, 2020, and to approve June 3rd, 2020.
And just as an aside, I had Lynn Nichols in, and he's fixed it, so Sarah can now do these for me, and I won't have to...
Great, that's very good.
Second. Was it favor? All three of us voted in favor of the motion. Item three, review of treasurer's warrants.
Hmm.
Motion approved.
I wouldn't do that, have you?
There's no numbers.
Yeah, Lana told me she was adding numbers, and I took out the numbers, and apparently I never, never put them back in. Payroll, 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 and AP. Okay, so AP, payroll is 42, 44, and 45. And then accounts payable is 43 and 46. Now you're gonna approve.
Payroll, 42, 44, 45, and accounts payable, 43 and 46.
Motion approved, red.
Second.
Who's in favor? All three of us. Open session, don't anticipate any interest in that this moment. All business, tax commitment.
Okay, we have Josh Vaughan here to talk to us, and he's going to talk about tax commitment and land valuation. We've got the commitment pretty well nailed down. And you asked me to get him here to speak to land valuation.
Sure. Perfect, thank you, Josh, for coming.
There was some interest about waterfront. So I pulled up a sales ratio, which you got in front of you. The waterfront properties right now are 89%. And I use sales that was in the study that the state gives us every year. If you look at the second and third page, the 2019 and the 2020 state valuation, the ones that are highlighted are the waterfront sales. And you can see that some, both years, some of them are on the same report. Why they do that is to actually help your valuation out, because they don't have enough waterfront sales in the Town of Sangerville. So they'll use some sales two years in a row. They can use up to three years of them. So I pulled them, plus I pulled a couple other ones that was not on your sales ratio. And if you look here, when it says state, that's the state ones.
Wait, let's see where you... okay, okay.
Right here?
Yep.
You'll see that says state and sales. The sales are the ones I pulled from deeds and transfers that I got from the town. What's in yellow is when you do a sales ratio, they throw out the top third and the bottom third of sales, and just do an average in the middle.
So the yellow ones are discarded?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can see the yellow ones up top are ones that are sold closer to the sales price. The ones down the bottom are really high. There's quite a variety and change there. And then, I just got to put a copy of the cards that sold after that. So really, the state gives you 10% leeway, and when you add that in, you're not far off. You're at 98%, but however, you didn't use that 10% leeway in the state's valuation. The state's valuation is saying that the town is at 102%.
And where do you find that number?
That's on the state, particular comes from the state.
Okay.
The second one down is 102%. That's your certified ratio. So right now, if the waterfront's at 89, and the whole town's at 102, really, the waterfront people are paying 11% less valuation-wise than the people that are not on the water.
These are all of last year, so.
Yeah. So, you know, you can do this, you can raise the valuation of your waterfront to make it more even. There's a couple different ways to do it. There's a revaluation, which is, I don't think you really need a full revaluation. Your ratio's pretty good, and that costs money. If we just did a, you know, like a percentage on your land, bring your land up, that wouldn't cost the town any money. We could do a, you know, 11% increase in your land. Of course, that means everybody on the water is gonna see an increase, where people that are not on the water is not gonna see an increase. But it's kind of up to you on how you want to deal with it, if you want to. I mean, you're not far off right now if you use that 10% leeway, but it's keep declining every year. It's gonna get worse and worse and worse. Waterfront's just selling for a lot of money.
Yeah, it's not just Sangerville either.
No, it's everywhere.
Dexter's amazing, because his properties around the lake just keep going up, and everything else in town keeps going down, so it's like this... And I think we have an element of that, too. So if I understand you correctly, if you're not on waterfront right now, you're actually carrying a greater tax burden than those who are on waterfront. And how would you, how would you put a value on that? How much different is it?
Well, I would give it an 11%, because our ratio come out at 89.
And we're at 102.
Right.
Okay, that's, alright, I follow that.
Yep.
So that's what I figured, is about 11%. However, that 102% already includes the waterfront, so if I took them out, you would probably be more like 105% if you weren't on the water. And that's the trouble, if we go raising values right now, you're at 102%. If you raise the water values, you're probably gonna jump up to, you know, 108.
What's the ratio of water to non-water, of the total?
I don't know that.
You mean just, like...
The whole town?
Yeah, if you've got, you've got all of this assessed value, how much of it has a W, and how much of it doesn't?
Right.
To me, that's, that's kind of a critical component of this.
Probably, I'm just guessing here, but I'm probably only 20% water. However, the valuation difference is a lot more, because your valuation on water is a lot higher.
I guess, I mean, in terms of asset value, not acreage? Is that what you...
Yeah.
Right, so what are the total assets?
I would have to figure that out.
Okay.
I don't have that, actually, I probably have...
I mean, does that seem like it would be, if we knew the total asset, and how much of that asset was water? Either land and buildings on water?
It would give you an idea. So the reason, and I'm not sure, so just so you know really how this all started. So last year, the camp road across from me, there were some issues, and it was Dean private. So I started going through a bunch of the deeds to understand who actually owns this road, who has right of ways. So that's where I started really noticing. Now, opinion, and that's, it's an opinion, if the valuations that are on that road across from me are very low compared to what they're actually selling for. So, and so, and within the last two weeks, there has been two camps on that road sold, and then another one down on the mountain. Well, they're under contract, so they're not officially, but they're there. So the difference between the sale price to what their assessed value on those three places is 310,000. Now, the one on the mountain road, that one wasn't as bad. I think that was like a 40 or 50,000 difference. But the two that were on the road across from me was well over 100 apiece. And if you look at that sales ratio, I mean, that'll tell you the difference right there. The total.
Okay, what page are we on now?
The first one.
Okay.
So if you look at the sales prices here, and that's what it's valued at. Like this one sold for 191, this one's valued at 107.
Wow.
So the total is the valuation? Is the total is that...
Land and buildings.
Yeah, land and building. So if you get down here, the bottom, this one sold for 125, but we have it valued at 176. So yeah, you can pick out three or four and see that they are valued, sold for way more, but you can pick out three or four and say they sold the left.
And all of these were water?
Yeah, yeah.
All of these were water?
All of these are just water.
Okay.
Because I know you guys were talking about water, so I pulled the waterfront sales study.
And is, is this study that you did right here, Sangerville?
Yeah.
All Sangerville?
Just Sangerville.
Okay.
And like I said, they come from this, the state valuation
Okay.
that was done just for Sangerville.
Okay.
When we do it for taxes, we can only use that town and that town, and I can't go to other towns and pull sales.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Where, you know, the crazy does a difference.
And some of these are one-year old, some of these are two-year old.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. As you can see, it's gonna keep dropping year to year. Either you get on it now, or you wait and do, until it gets way down and do the whole thing. The other two, I found this the other night. It's a website, because obviously I've been looking at houses, so. It's X O M E real estate dot com. And if you go on that, and then once you go in under Sangerville, it has a little whatever about Sangerville. And so this starts right out, and it says, "The median home value in Sangerville is $172,500." And that's based off from the average sales, new sales, obviously. They didn't go back two years for that. And it gets into ages, and it gets into, how percentage, 56% are owned, 15, 5 are rented, 27 are vacant, and then all your leftovers. So it gets into the, everything you thought, keep bringing up about schools, it's got all of our numbers there. But what's interesting, and I'm scrolling to get to it, right here. "The median household income in Sangerville, Maine, is $28,824." "The median household income of surrounding county is 37,110, and the national average is $53,422." So I thought that was interesting. And the median age for people living in Sangerville is 50.
Oh, jeez.
So.
Wow.
Throw all them numbers together.
That's what I figured when we were looking.
So, I just thought it was...
That's... what was that, X O M E real estate dot com? Is that what you said?
It's X O M E dot com.
Oh, dot com.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Well, John, it seems like, and I may be looking at this incorrectly, but if we, if we know the ratio of water to non-water, we'll know the impact of moving a few percentage. I mean, extreme example, if only 10% of the total assets are water, moving a couple of percentage points isn't gonna make that much difference.
Right.
But if it's half of all of our, then it would make a huge difference.
Right.
If they're off by 11. So I would, I think it would be helpful if we could know what the total, total value is, and then the ratio of water to non-water.
Now, you want just the one with buildings?
I would say everything.
Or, you know, on the water, even if they don't have a building?
Just trying to think how...
I mean, you said you were looking at some raw land.
Yeah, not much raw land in Sangerville.
No.
It's all camps. There's one lot that's been set, it's April 20. We do have it, like on this, on my printout, the land on the waterfront developed is at $7,725,930.
Now, where do, is that something that we have in front of us as well?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, this is a printout that comes out of my system.
Okay. Is that something you can share with us?
Yeah.
Do you want copies?
That would be great.
And then, it might be easy to figure out that way. But this is just the land, developed waterfront, is $7,725,930. And then the buildings on the waterfront, $5,414,030. So that kind of gives you an idea what he was asking for, Mike. Right.
Yeah, once we know the total.
The total valuation of the town, total value, 72, 878.
So 13 of the 72 is water, building, land.
But when we do, like every year, we do, is it 20% rebound? About, I mean, not a, but isn't it like every five years, which kind of is supposed to be? Every year, every year, I'll ride around, do pickups, or whatever.
Yeah. But, so when you're doing that, you kind of try to do more residential? I mean, houses, not so much, I mean, land's land, as far as wood laws, right?
Right.
18%.
18%.
None of that's gonna change it, do you actually change, like a rebound will change everybody's.
Sure.
When we do the ride around, it's looking at buildings only. We don't, we're not, we don't change the land values until the sales ratio tells us we're too low.
Well, my other thought was, what about if we, so when you do that 20, 25% a year, you're just randomly doing it?
Yeah.
You don't have a rule that says, "Out of like 25%, I'm gonna do 40% waterfront, 60%."
Right.
Well, I'm kind of wondering, instead of, I don't know, I was just trying to think of a different way to do it.
Right.
Without being, you know what I mean? For every 1% on non, it's 5% for water, or 5, in other words, a magnitude.
It's 5 to 1.
There's 5, 5 to 1, yes.
Yeah, 5 to 1.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It only depends on once you decide to go up. I mean, the people that have little waterfront, I mean, you know them a lot, 200 front feet, is not gonna see a big increase.
Right.
But the people that have a lot of waterfront is gonna get hit hard.
And buildings with high valuation. I mean, if you had a, if you have a home that's $800,000, Center Pond, you're gonna feel this.
Yeah.
Particularly if you're a non-resident.
Right, because you're not gonna get the home back.
Yep, yep. In fact, you'd offset several $170,000 homes. You're, they're all gonna feel a significant decrease, because you're telling me the mean is 170, so.
And whatever we do, it's gonna, like I said, raise that 102%. I will say, your waterfront is valued pretty low. I mean, $300 a front foot. If you look at these cards, it'll show you right here, 480 dollars per pond, you know?
So where, finding that number, sorry? Where, just so that, where is that number, on these, on the valuation cards?
Yeah.
Okay, so where is that?
Right here, under where it says front price. That's the starting price.
Okay, so, front foot price. Okay, so that means frontage.
Yeah. So, like Sabette Lakering now, Will Manic, we're doing 500 dollars front foot. Seems better to be 8.
So how does that number come to be?
As far as sales.
It's a 100% sales basis? Yep, okay.
That was set back when the revaluation was done. It's probably 30,000 right now.
But that's actually based per pond?
Yeah.
So like Center Pond has one number, where the other pond has the other number?
Yeah, because it's very hard to do, because we don't have enough sales.
No, there's no, yeah, there's no sales on the other one.
Does it say on these valuation cards what pond it's on?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, okay.
So what did you say Will Manic was?
$1,300 with the front foot.
Do you know what Piper is?
Piper, I'm not positive, but I think they're in the $800 range.
Yeah.
Which would be, you know, Center Pond's a pretty nice pond, people want to be there. You know, I'm guessing that's probably where, $800 range is where they should be.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
You know, Harlow Pond is kind of...
And we don't have all the Harlow Pond, we share that with Parkman, right?
Right.
Yeah, we really don't have, I mean, we've got some there, but we don't have the, like Parkman's got. They've got way more of a footprint than we do.
And I would have to check Parkman, but I'm pretty sure that...
No, it's about half, isn't it? Yeah.
You've got as much, because the Harlow side really doesn't have any, any camps on it. And so, Manic.
Yeah, it's got a ton of undeveloped land on it. And what's that other pond, Bridie, that's between, just north of Sang...
Mar.
Mar?
Yeah.
One, yeah.
By Cleaves?
Yeah, I don't think we have much value on that one, I have to look, but... You know, I think Parkman's $500, I have to look.
With a low Parkman?
Yes, this doesn't make any sense. Off center, I mean, center's a nice, clean pond.
Center would be a lot better, I think, sales-wise.
Can you change just one pond?
Yeah, it's water-based.
Yeah, it's called a neighborhood adjustment. And that's what we could do, like I said, we would do that for free. But if you wanted a full rebound, then it's gonna, a lot more time involved. You're gonna have to go out, remeasure houses, pictures, you know, that's gonna cost, of course.
But really, it doesn't look like we need that.
I don't think you need it. I mean, the evaluations are still high. If the evaluation was 80%, then I'd say, yeah, we should do a rebound. Probably do the whole town, what we're doing. But it looks like you really just need a neighborhood adjustment right now. I think your buildings are pretty good, and we checked them, we were the ones that measured them in the beginning with. I don't think you're gonna gain much from doing that. Good thing, too, I don't know if you heard what you thought was, Mike, but if he does, we're supposed to do the 20, 25% eval every year anyway. And right now, there's not really a rule to it, he just does it. But what if we kind of split that? We could do percentages off from valuation or whatever, but just say, can we do that that way, that we say, "Out of that 25%, 15 has to be waterfront-based compared to whatever the numbers are?" You could. I think it'd be better off to do like a neighborhood adjustment, do them all in one year.
Well, I think, right, but I mean, as far as, I mean, like right now, you're doing a, you do, you just do your neighborhood adjustment, period. That'd go straight across the board.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't, that's not the saying that, as you're driving around, that you're doing to see if there's a new deck, or...
We do that in the whole town every year, though. So I mean, yeah, legally, you're supposed to do 25%, you know? Do the whole town every four years. But we actually ride around the whole town every year. I mean, of course, you're gonna miss some, but by doing it every year, if we miss it one year, hopefully we're picking that deck up the next year. So we really don't do the 25%, we do more.
Correct. So that, that number, the, the per foot value, what is Sangerville's approximately? 300 and something?
Yeah, 300 on some.
Well, it depends on which pond you're on. Right, that's okay.
But then it gets factored down. It's not just, you know, you got 100 front, like this one here. This one starts at 450, and it's only got 150 front feet. So the factor's 90%.
Mm-hmm.
So if you figure out this, you know, by the front feet, you're actually not charging them that $480 front feet.
Right.
So it depends on the depth and the excess factor of the waterfront. Like your average waterfront lot is, I'd have to look it up, but I'm pretty sure it's 200 front feet, every town's different.
Yeah, but that's also Manic, that's on center. I mean, the first one, you get on here, center.
Right.
520. But... It'll show you the difference, I mean, it's not the same water.
Yeah.
So if you're less than 200, you know, you're gonna have a small factor here. If you're more than 200, that's gonna go more. And then the depth factor, like this one, is the average depth is 102 front feet. We're using the standard depths of 100 front feet. So that changes it all, too, you know? If you've got 300 feet back instead of 100, then it's gonna be more.
So that standard depth means, the standard depth, not of the pond?
Of the lot.
Of, oh, depth of the lot?
Yes.
Back.
Back.
We try to take, and that's hard, too. We try to take a neighborhood and say, if more than 50% of your lots is only 100 feet back, then that's what we're gonna use for a standard.
I see.
It all depends, you know, some of the neighborhoods are 250.
Oh, okay.
Because when they sold the lots, or some of them, they made big lots.
But what about the exception within the neighborhood? Does that get addressed, or is that individual?
That gets addressed by the factors. You know, if you're at 100 and you own 200, then the factor's gonna be more like 1.3, where if you're at 90 feet back, the factor's gonna be...
Goes down, but yeah, less than 1, yeah.
So that's how that gets addressed. Now, we try to go back like 250 feet, and call that your waterfront lot, and anything behind that is excess acreage. Because, you know, if you've got 10 acres on the water, and I priced that all as waterfront, you're gonna have a million-dollar lot, which would never sell for that.
Correct.
So we try to break it out as, you know, 250 feet being your standard, and then the rest of it's excess.
So in the case of the Parkman, it's Manic and...
Harlow.
Harlow. And you said Parkman's valuation per foot is greater than ours?
I would have to look, but I'm pretty sure it's 500.
So we, we, that one, to me, is a little bit of a red flag. We ought to at least be using what they're using. I mean, so that's not a bad starting point on that body of water. And if, I think Center Pond's pretty desirable. Seems like there's quite a lot of interest there.
Yeah.
It should be up there with Piper and Webstone, or even, you know, I wonder what Puffer's Pond is in Dexter?
Yeah, I don't know that, true.
But that's not that, I mean, that's not Center Pond, but it'd be interesting to see what the... Or the Little Lake, that's more like Center Pond.
If we had more sales on each pond, it would be a lot better to figure out what we should charge, other than just shooting in the dark. And that's very hard, because you don't have very many sales, much in Center Pond, in a year. You'd have to go back 10 years, and the state won't let it do that.
Well, that's, I think what's happening, and that's why I'm seeing it so much right now, was in the last, and it started last fall. A few of these camps went up for sale for some really big money, and they sold. So, you know, I mean, you've got people that don't use them the whole lot, they're seeing what, you know, on that pond, what you can sell it for. And it's definitely, it's a two-side deal, you know?
Right.
They're trying to, they're reacting to the market and making a buck at the same time with COVID and everything else going on. I think there's a greater interest in buying down there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And that's just driving it up even more, so. My brother's on Piper, and he's seen the same thing there. Stuff that had, people had tried to sell for a long time, all of a sudden, now it's just going.
Oh, yeah.
But what's funny, though, is, I mean, I'm looking in Dover as well as Sangerville, and I'm not seeing this house is selling Dover like they are in Sangerville. Sangerville, Parkman's moving a lot, Abbott's moving, but...
But all on the water, yeah? Or you're just in real estate in general?
Everything on the water is going fast. Anything in Sangerville that's a, you know, a relatively nice house, they're not lasting.
Wow.
And like I said before, the only problem is, if you raise waterfront up, you know, $10 million, that's gonna bring that state valuation up. You legally can go 10% over, that's all you can claim. So if you're assessing at 110%, and that's what you claim your town to be, you can actually get a check, like your homestead check will be factored by 10%. You'll get more. Now, if you evaluate it at 120, they'll only still let you do the 110%.
I don't, my thought is not to overdo this. It's, it's to get it more in line of, of the reality of where we're at today.
But the way that, like I said, the way the state does it, they don't separate it. They put your in-town and water together, because they don't think you don't have enough sales to do a separate sales analysis. So right now, together, you're at 102%. So no matter what you do for bringing up valuation, you're gonna bring up the valuation of the town.
You are.
Yep.
Unless you bring down.
The waterfront, I mean, the in-town.
Correct.
Right, without...
So if you raise them five and the other down one, you have the same net value, but you shifted the burden. I mean, it was, I'm sick of that 5 to 1 ratio. And you could do it again, you could do down a half, and up two and a half, and you would, we wouldn't change the total valuation, but the burden would be shifted.
Now, hardest thing of doing that is buildings, can't just factor, you know, a building on the pond, seems to be worth the same as in-town. And now we're just talking changing land.
Yep, right.
Um, that wouldn't be too bad to do, if you wanted to do like a land adjustment lower the end of town and up on the water.
It'll be interesting to know the ramifications of that, you know, how that would leverage. And I think, just because, we, we need a basis for this. We need a, you know, rationale for it, comparing to Parkman, comparing to other towns in the county, is a good way to...
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, we can't use it in our sales ratio, because like I said, the state had defined that you can only use sales in your town for town purposes, you know? Appraisers, like I said, are different. So...
No, we have enough bodies of water within a, not much of a circle to give us, and they're not all equal, we understand that, but it would give us an idea of where they're all kind of at.
Yeah, I mean.
Where you think we should be.
With the sales ratio, I mean, I'm thinking that the waterfront is eleven percent value too low.
And we still have cushion. We're only at one oh two.
Right.
We, at one ten, we wanna start being careful.
Right.
Yeah, so we, we don't really need to swap five for one. We could, we could raise uh, land, waterfront land by two, and then we might be at, uh, we might be at one, one oh three or something like that.
But, uh, you know, like Parkman, yeah, they're at five hundred dollars, but they're, they're at a hundred and fifteen percent right now.
So they're really pushing it.
Yeah, it was either, you know, do a rebound, bring the values down.
Mm-hmm.
Then your memory goes up. So the kind of pain is something that, that they don't see a big change in your tax bill. So they kind of put their nose up to date and said, you know, I'm gonna keep it this way. I'm not gonna change it. They certify a hundred and ten percent, which is perfectly legal. That's your trouble because you don't, the state just lumps everything together, sales, water, and in-town. So they just kind of say you're a hundred and two percent, and that's it.
I guess my whole personal view of it is it just seems like it, it's a person, they could be away or not, but their investment on the pond has done a lot better than the person who owns a piece of property on the Great Road.
For sure.
Uh, and that hasn't, that inequity hasn't been addressed, you know, addressed in years. So that's, I guess that's kind of what my personally, I'm looking at, but.
Yeah.
Looks like we've validated that.
Two ways. I mean, you can do a reval, and that will bring everybody up in line better, because it'd be bringing everybody that's not on the water down. But that's a big cost to town. Is it really?
Right.
Cost efficient in the end.
I kind of like your thought of that community bringing up that way.
It seems like.
If you could, uh, if you could get some numbers together, what do you think? You know, comparing it to what's out there, what the really, what the real number should be. And then we could see what that is as a whole.
Yeah, what the impact would be.
Yeah.
You know, how meaningful would that be?
Right, and then put it to the test to some taxpayers.
Yeah, so this house right here, they're gonna save this, and this, this, this property owner here is gonna pay this. So what would that mean? And that would be good. We know whether to mess with it or not. Yeah. I think you understand what we're looking at.
Yeah.
So. And it seems like your instinct for, I'm surprised that we're that far off in some of these towns. That's a little.
Well, it usually doesn't.
That's good news though, actually, I guess.
Yeah, like I said, usually don't get looked at until the state valuation drops so low that.
Right.
Hey, let's do a reval and do the whole town. You just, you don't say valuation, they had it. But if you look at that paper that I give you, they don't use many water sales either.
Right. That's really skewing it. I mean, I use Dexter as an example because the properties are so extreme. And if you throw in one from Spring Street for every one you take off the lake, you're not getting any, you know.
But ten years ago, the waterfront weren't selling like it is now.
I know. No, I bet the last six months has been more sold on Center Pond than there has been the last four years.
Right.
I mean, they just don't. No, and, and ten years ago, well, particularly fifteen years ago, all property, there was a lot more demand for it. I mean, it's, it's pretty hard for some of these to even hold their own now.
Yeah. Yeah, and then waterfront is, it's, anybody guess sometimes, because you see the prices on them, and you look at them, say, I'll never sell. Next thing you know, it sells.
Yeah.
And then there's other ones that are dying. You'd be like, geez, I should get more than that. I bet that sits there for a year.
Start reading each, find out why. Oh, yeah, anybody you want can drive across your lawn.
There's a lot of them like that.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of runaway, runaway issues.
Well, thank you. If that's, if you could kind of give us a feel for, you know, you know, if you, if you pushed over here, what happens over here? If every dollar, you know, what, what that would do, I think we could have a conversation as to.
All right.
What makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't know that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
It's kind of cool. Now I understand how that works though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't realize pond to pond and the depth and.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, there's so many different variables that all get tweaked.
Interesting. I guess I did know it was seventy-two million because that number came up on that lap, yeah. I just didn't know how much of that was water.
Yep.
Interesting. Okay.
And if you're, just so, and then if your state valuation goes up, how does that work with like matching, you know, what we get?
We get less.
Right.
Or, for example, on the school, we might have to carry more burden. That's kind of what happened with Parkman.
So there's a, there's a fine line to.
But the state, that's what's kind of interesting. The state is using the same numbers that I'm looking at right now. The only thing is, is I'm looking in real time, and like he said, they can go back two years. So that's how you're. You can be fairly low. I mean, if your market starts fluctuating, you still could be two years off. But we could, there's significant room in there to change without changing our valuation. If, I mean, if, if, just, let's say they're at half what they should be. You could, you could double them and, and reduce everybody else by roughly twenty-five percent and, and.
Right, right.
And nothing would change except.
Yeah, yeah.
The tax bills are gonna change. Um, it's, that's kind of an interesting.
Right.
Phenomenon. Now, we, I don't know, he, he said one ten is, I don't know if it matters if we go from one oh two to one oh five.
No, I don't think it does. I think it's when you go over that.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like.
Yeah.
In fact, it sounded like we might actually get more assistance right up to the point where it could cost you more.
Correct.
Yeah, closer you get to being real, the better you are. Okay. Reopening SVMP.
I contacted MMA and asked for, um, an opinion about our liabilities. I have not heard back from them. I don't know if everybody's gone on vacation or what the deal is. I have a lot of push to open the park.
It's interesting. I noticed, uh, in Bangor, I go buy a park to go to the golf course, and they took all the basketball down.
Oh, took them out?
Yeah, they took them out.
Pools and brewing.
But, you know, they unbolted them so there's no rim.
Oh, there's just a backboard.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. And the pools, you said all the public pools. That's cool.
I don't know how much longer they're gonna do that, but that's, I was, because I, we've got kids playing basketball here all the time.
We do.
I mean, my own personal opinion, when the governor says, we can do it, that's when we do it.
Yeah.
That's when everybody else is doing it.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree.
On MMA's website, there's a, um, from the state, there's a bulletin about what you should do for reopening, you know? Check this, 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 and this. There's a long list of things to check. Um, but again, I asked MMA about liability. I've got a resident who wants to, well, a non-resident, who wants to do a skills-based baseball. And I said, well, I.
Like a clinic?
Yeah, he, well, you know, instead of playing, um, a baseball game, you just work on batting, or you just work on fielding, or you, you know.
Yeah.
And I said, I'd let him know if we were opening, when I know about the liability, and I still don't know about the liability. But he said they would all use their own equipment. They would all bring their own water bottles. They would have hand sanitizer, but.
So, just, sorry, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So he, it, it's for profit for him? Like, no?
No, it's just, he's, it's not pirate, but it's.
He just wants to do this clinic. So how does that, how does that work? It's a non-resident?
Well, the park is, it's like the people playing basketball there. We don't sanction basketball.
No, no.
But we don't prohibit it. We didn't pull the hoops down. We don't go and drive people out.
Could prohibit it would be to pull hoops because we have, we have no way to police it.
Right, 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 right.
And so if, I mean, if this individual or an individual was over there with some friends or people and practicing.
Didn't ask.
Batting, we wouldn't.
Right.
We wouldn't call sheriff on it.
No, that's right. That's right.
But that is, that's very different than saying, yes, we give you permission to do it.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
And we could be wrong now.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I don't know if that.
But he called you for permission.
He called to see when the park was gonna be open, so my.
I see.
My.
Yeah.
Guess is that he's going to be quote unquote, not law-abiding, but he's gonna be following the governor's guidelines.
Sure, yeah.
And the town's guidelines and not, not rocking the boat in any.
Right.
Fashion.
Right.
So. I was going to, if I'd gotten a go-ahead from MMA, I was going to tell him that the park was open, but now I'll tell him that.
If MMA says there's no liability, then I don't think, do you care?
Why isn't Bangor open?
Because some people have an agenda.
But what does a governor say? What, what is, what is the mandate? Okay, the mandate is they're still closed.
Just like you go to Pat's Pizza right now, and there's nobody wearing a mask. That's what, they've elected to do that.
Okay.
Now, they may get, they may lose their liquor license.
I see.
That's happened.
Well, actually, they don't have to because they've already got turned in for it, and they've gone back in, and they don't have to wear masks.
Yeah, so, I, I guess, if MMA says, myself personally, if they, as long as they say, no, the town has no liability, personally, I wouldn't care if anybody used the park. Because I feel like that's my responsibility to make sure the town doesn't.
Have any liability.
Right.
Right.
Beyond that, I, people have a right to do what they want to do.
I look at the governor. She set a rule. That's what we're all supposed to do.
Yeah.
Everything else after that's an opinion.
If there's no liability, then I'd buy.
Well, I.
You can do what you want.
But if the town, yeah, but if, if the, if the governor's saying the town, the, the old parks, municipal parks have to be closed, then I think we just follow her rule until she says, okay, now they can open. Then we say, well, they're open. Do what you want to do.
They're gonna do what they want to do anyway, so we just say it's closed.
And, and then they can break the law.
MMA could come back to us and say, not only do you have liability, you have liability if you don't prohibit. In other words,
Yeah.
you better take your basketball hoops down. And if they said that,
Ah.
I would be a proponent of taking the basketball hoops down.
Yeah, so, so we do want to hear them.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I, really, that's all that matters to me.
Yep. Yeah, do we have a date?
It's changing all the time.
Yeah, um, it was the end of June, right?
I don't know.
Like I'm thinking, it was the end of June, um.
Walmart was closed, still had, was at what, three hundred people? Now they're at six hundred. There's no more waiting in line at Walmart.
And you can't play basketball in Sangerville?
That's right. It's crazy, huh?
Well, that's where they kind of lose.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it was the same deal. You could have, what, a hundred and fifty, two hundred people at Walmart?
You can have fifteen hundred protesters on Commerce Street.
Yeah, that's like.
That's not wrong.
And people at a rally.
And you can't have batting practice in Piscataquis County in a place that hasn't had a case?
Right, yeah. No, I know, I know. It's, it's, yeah.
You will comply.
So I, I will say until I hear from MMA.
Yep.
That's the biggest thing.
The close sign stays up and, and when the close sign comes down, you can do as you want.
Right. Yep.
Play at your own risk.
Yep. Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, item six, new business, the audit.
Okay, the audit came in yesterday afternoon. I must confess that I have not even had time to read it.
Do you want to table it?
No, I just wanted to point out to you that overall, their, their report is favorable. They had a couple of things they wanted us to work on. Which one? It's not that one.
Do they give you an overview letter?
Yes, and I sent.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that. I did, actually didn't see that.
To do, here it is right here.
It's, one thing, they just needed some school numbers too.
They, they needed two things. They needed, um, how much debt obligation we had through the school, and how much debt obligation we had to the HED. And I don't even know, you said there's no.
No debt to the HED.
So I've gotta call in the school. She'll call me back, um, and I can send that to them.
I don't think there's a debt through the school, is there?
I don't think they were doing any debt service. Last I knew.
I'm pretty sure the, the pellet boilers was the last thing, and that's paid.
Yep. So I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure there's none, but I just have to verify. Um, and then the other thing. Can you even find it?
Actually, we need to move that for that.
There were a couple of things. One thing, um, the auditor checked a W four, and it had a piece of missing information. So he asked us, here it is, to do a regular check on that. While performing the audit for the above-mentioned fiscal year, we found one instance of a form W four that was missing or incomplete in payroll records. Federal law requires W fours to be kept on file for all employees. We recommend that management review all personnel files to ensure W fours are included and properly completed. Additionally, we recommend management perform periodic reviews of individual personnel files to ensure accuracy and completeness. So, yeah, that's something we will do. And the other thing was, they noted that the outstanding checklist was carrying multiple stale-dated checks. These stale-dated checks should be researched and either voided or reissued or sent to unclaimed property. We recommend that the town implement and follow these procedures for dealing with current and future stale-dated checks.
And then over one year? Because we did this last year.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, we had two.
It was two or three.
Yeah, yeah, I, those are taken care of, so it must be this year. I'll, I'll go over with Lorna and we'll look.
Yeah, I'm surprised they have a couple of years to deal with.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyway.
So, Lorna, I'll take care of that. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, housekeeping, just housekeeping.
And they thanked us, Lorna and I, for, um, our cooperation through the audit process, and there were no big, there were no big issues.
No big red flags.
So I'll, so I'll be reviewing, yeah. I'll be reviewing the audit, make sure that their numbers agree with mine, but things should be set there. So.
Right.
I haven't signed it yet, but I think we're in shape.
Contu B, winter sand and salt.
Okay, I was panicking because I hadn't received many responses. Um, let me pull up here. I have three responses. That's my one. Two. Three. I'm going to show you. This one is well, Steve Lawson sent or delivered a quote, but there's an error in his math. So when I was looking it over, I called him and had him resend it to me. So Herrick, Gerish, and Lawson, um, put in quotes. And so while I was doing that, I called them on salt, because obviously we have to mix our winter sand. And they first told me that they give us the sixty-five dollars a ton that they gave us last year. And I asked them what they were gonna give the state because normally that number's out by now, but it isn't yet. And, uh, the guy looked into it, and he called me back and said that they would drop it to fifty-eight-five.
That's, that's good.
I haven't seen anything from the state yet, but I think that's probably, probably going to New England salt.
Can you read that?
When I researched last year, none of the other companies could come anywhere close.
I was trying to.
Doing, doing New England salt? So New England salt, fifty-eight, fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't that the number you want?
Well, that's what I was just trying to figure what he was doing. Is that, so, but is that number? So Gerish's number's delivered, but it's not put up, right?
Correct. He didn't want to put it up.
So the fifteen seventy-five, that's delivered, put up?
For Gerish?
No, for Lawson.
For Lawson, no. That's why I, that's why I first called him. I said.
And it says Dozer, Loader, Escavator.
He's got it backwards. He had it.
And this is delivered, this is put up, right?
No. This is delivered. This is added.
Is there a number on here that I'm missing?
It's another eight fifty to put up.
I don't see a number.
The only thing I looked.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. Oh, 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 okay, okay. I'm, I'm looking at the body, like, the body this way and it's about, okay, sorry.
We always have bucky yards when we put it up.
Jeez. Okay.
It's what everybody else said.
And is, we're talking.
But I bet that number.
We haven't seen the third one.
Okay.
But that's where he's at.
That's what I guess.
Like, Sam, that's his.
Well, okay.
It has to be, there's no way he's gonna charge that much.
Well, I asked him twice and he still said that that's.
Okay, okay, fourteen fifty, yeah, okay. And that's. And we're talking all about the same sand for all three?
No, I don't think they're all the same source, are they?
No.
No.
No, Gerish is Milo.
Oh, that's right, of course.
Where is, I didn't, what was?
Where's Zach getting his?
Parkman.
Park Abbott, I think.
Out of his, out of his pick?
What was his? I didn't see his.
Thirteen.
Yep.
Here you go.
Wow.
Last year, he quoted a dollar more than that, I think.
But.
So she's saying, that's the price delivered, then it's eight fifty a yard to put it up? And I told her, we've not, we only pay a buck, we've only ever paid a buck a yard to put it up. So if he's gonna charge us eight fifty, is he buying the salt?
I don't believe so, because he was telling me that he had to have his own equipment, he was bringing his own equipment over, he was.
There's no way.
I'll ask him again, but.
Sure, that's not three fifty?
She says it's eight fifty.
It's eight fifty, cause when I, he, when he figured it out the first time, it was.
We charge, we've always paid a buck.
See, when he first sent it to me.
And how many yards are we, are they quoting, bidding on?
Twenty-two fifty, twenty-two hundred.
When I figured it out, that's, it's six fifty, it's six fifty that makes that number.
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two fifty is what, but I mean.
Cubic yards.
And last year, we, um, had. Nearly twenty-five hundred.
Thirty-five for the sand and then fourteen-six to put it up. Something's an off.
Well, um. We wouldn't have put it up anyway.
No.
I mean, we would do, I mean, I'm not sure we'd have anybody put it up.
Somebody has to put it up.
No, I mean, any one of the people bringing the sand, we might just have.
None of them quoted, other than Lawson, that they wanted.
So probably, we will hire C and W to put it up.
I would ask, you'd say you didn't get a bid to do that.
No, I didn't say I would have to ask, I mean, they say, no.
No, maybe they already offered to put a bid.
No, I know, but historically, they haven't sold us the sand. They usually did put it up though.
No, they've only ever put it up once.
I thought they helped Seth last year.
No.
No, Seth didn't.
Well, Seth might put it up for us.
Might.
Or you could ask somebody else what they're gonna charge.
Yep, and Seth didn't bid on this, no.
He doesn't have a sand.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, it would've been way out of the. He'd had to buy it from somebody else.
Right, right, right.
So, uh, you, what do you have down for sand prices between the three?
For, for sand?
Lawson is fifteen seventy-five.
Okay.
Delivered.
These are all delivered?
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Gerish is fifteen twenty-five. Right?
I have fourteen fifty, but that must not be delivered.
I didn't see that on there. Actually, sand delivered and we mix salt with provided machine. So does that mean he's putting up? Cause you're not gonna mix it until you're putting it up.
He's gonna put it up. He told me he didn't want to, when I talked to him on the phone.
So that's fifteen twenty-five put up? Is the way that's signed, cause you're not gonna mix it until you're putting it in the vial?
Doesn't seem possible.
Putting it, is, doesn't that, isn't that what that means? Mix, putting up?
The way his verbiage is, is sand delivered and we mix salt with provided machine. So he uses our loader and our bulldozer. But that's how I'm reading this, for fifteen twenty-five, he's gonna put it up.
And his product is out of Milo. Have we seen it? No. But that's a good price.
It's a damn good price.
Mm-hmm.
And then Herrick's price is thirteen fifty.
Delivered.
Delivered, but not put up.
No, but if you go with the old theory that it can get put up for.
A dollar.
Buck a yard.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it should, it should, he really shouldn't be, he might even come in underneath.
I'd be kind of, I mean, I really like the sample that we have of that, but I would like, for that money, I would like to see what that sample would be. If we could get one.
Well, we need a lot more clarity on Steve's quote.
Yeah, his doesn't. Yeah. It'd be interesting if Zach could give us a sample and ask if he would put it up.
Okay, he gave us a sample last year, if I didn't ask for one this year, I used it. It sat up on the door and when it was icy, I used it on the front step, on.
Is it out of their, Herrick's pit?
That's your sample over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, but honestly, I would just soon have a fresh sample because that pit.
Is this Lawson's sample? That's Lawson's sample, that's, and that's from Kitchin?
From Guilford. Yeah, I'm listening, you got it from Guilford.
Rita got the jar. There's two different samples there.
Well, oh.
Okay, yeah.
So it would be interesting if we had, could actually see what Zach's getting out of his bit this year for that price point?
Yeah, that would be great. And we'll get maybe a little more clarity from Steve.
Yeah, so I'd love to have more clarity from Steve, for sure.
And I'd rather not wait two weeks.
I know, I know.
To, so if you get some information and we can.
We'll have a quick lunch or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you want me to ask Gerish for a sample?
Sure.
Well, if you. My own opinion, if we get a sample, you can get samples out of both, but if Zach gives you a sample and you want, we like it, and he can put that pile up for a buck a yard.
He's gonna win.
Go ahead, do it, go ahead with it.
He's gonna win, if he's got decent sand.
Right, right.
I mean, he's gotta be the lowest one. So I don't really wanna, you can get clarity, I guess, and, which would be good, and it may not be a bad idea to have a sample, so we can have it, just be amazed.
That's a very reasonable price out of Milo.
Hundred, hundred percent, that's a good price.
Mm-hmm.
So if you can get one in.
Sure, sure. No, we'll give it, we'll give it a fair shot.
Yeah, and just clarity as far as Steve, I guess.
And we, we can meet, like you said, for a pizza, just to bless it.
Mine is C.
We should have three.
Oh, here, this, this.
There it is.
Yep. Four, oh, because Zach.
This, this is the old one, where the mask is on, right?
He corrected it, yeah.
Yeah, you can start, we can start putting sand up next week, I'd be happy.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I, yeah, then all I have to do is get New England Salt, so.
Right.
And it's, and it's the people doing the, sand or doing the salt that would greatly facilitate.
It's much easier if you do, cause then they know when it's coming through and.
Well, Steve said to me, if, if he got the bid, he would be calling the.
Sand, the salt people and facilitator.
Well, it's the same deal for them, they don't wanna, you know, I mean.
He just wanted to go half a day and then.
You don't want, that's right, he don't want.
Get these more solved and, yeah.
It's just as much of a, especially when you're doing it this way, it's so much to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, under new business C, cemetery deed for Brandon and Judith Bragdon.
Okay, I know last time you signed a deed, we said it was a one-time deal. I have not worked.
Keep going with it.
Vote, okay, so, yes, it's for.
It's a two-time deal.
Brandon and Judith Bragdon, it's in the village cemetery.
This is absolutely it. Till the next one.
Yeah, it's all, yeah. It's a work in progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can't hold it, can't hold it up because we're rewriting up.
No.
Yeah.
It's lot sixty-one A, sixty-one B and sixty-one C, so if you could vote on that.
I'll make a motion to, um, ex, is that the right word, accept?
Grant.
Oh, grant, grant. A cemetery deed to Randall and Judith Bragdon in the village cemetery, lot sixty-one A, B and C.
Second.
We sign first and then, you know, we don't smudge each other.
Oh, yeah. What color pen are you using?
This one's kinda smudgy.
Smudgy, this is blue. Oh, wait, is this one?
This is a good one.
Mine's a black, it's ballpoint.
Yeah, this guy's got a huge point, it's making a mess.
I'll use the same one. Please. Or you're, Dale, you're next, right?
Do you have a, an alcohol bite?
Yeah.
Yep, good, good job.
Now wipe it again. Okay, good. Thank you.
I'm worried about hand sanitizer, cause I think it came from the distillery. Oh, it smells like vodka. Oh, it smells like tequila.
We took ours that we got from the distillery because it's still high enough alcohol content and used that to follow the homemade recipe. And diluted it back down with Halo.
Yep.
And it does work pretty good with either that. It's a little ripe.
I don't like the sticky ones.
You wanna dry it and apply that?
I hate that.
I put ours in a pump and I was just a little worried that maybe shot glasses.
Yeah. Keep commenting.
Item seven, Town Manager's Report.
Okay. I have several things here. Heard back from Levi about the fees for, um, registering cemetery deeds, whether or not I could just make it an office fee. He'd rather I didn't do that. He said I would wait until the ordinance passed to charge a fee, so I told him, we'd wait, and I'm still going to hit the registry of deeds line when we.
Yeah, we'll just, it's part of our thoughts.
Yep. So, and then. Town Hall. I got a call last week from Ashley Robinson saying, did I want her to work with Tim from Glidden Lumber? And I called her and turns out it was Tim Spencer from Gordon Construction, and I said, I don't know exactly what's going on, I'll call Tim and find out. I called Tim, he was thinking that we were going to have Ashley do the drawings after he told her what we wanted. So that it wouldn't cost a lot of money to have a plan drawn up. And he was gonna work on two, so he, I said, well, you're working on three plans or two plans? He's like, he was gonna work on two plans. And then all of a sudden, the library got back to me and said they wanted sixty-five square feet. And so then Tim gets back to you and says that, um. He and Brian have come up with a solution, but what about simply renovating the Abby Fowler School to accommodate the town office?
Yeah, I saw that email too, but. Uh, backing up, we were all at that meeting, did. Did you have any impression that we were directing him to work with the lady at True Value?
No, no.
Did, did, you, you know, no?
No, I thought that's why we were calling them and the ordinance was gonna take care of that.
That's right. That's right.
They were gonna work on something for us on their own.
That's right.
Ex- exactly.
I figured they had CAD.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
Yeah, nothing architectural, CAD, but CAD could be.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I don't think we need.
And, and I remember saying to him that, I said, you know, bear with us, this was just for us to start getting things on paper.
Yeah, it was like a sample.
Yeah, right.
In fact, several times, we diminished its importance.
Right, right. And, and I remember you saying, I really look forward to seeing what you're gonna come up with.
Yes, I, I wouldn't mind seeing the hand scratching on a piece of paper with this concept that we could look at.
Right, right.
As far as the floor plan.
Right, because especially.
And then you can manipulate that before you go to the next level.
Right, because he had such a sense of size and space and what, you, you know, that, that. It wasn't just putting lines on paper, it was like, oh, this is gonna work better if you, this space isn't, so that's very interesting.
And, cause when I saw your, you emailed your response to us, I assumed that, that you and Tim had collaborated with that, had come up with that strategy, and that's not the case.
No, he said he didn't want, he didn't have the, um. I need to believe that if he did it, or Gordon did it, that it would cost us a lot of money. And I'm like, well, I'm, I'm happy to work with Ashley, or have you worked with Ashley, but, you know.
Well, he didn't share any expense.
No, 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 no numbers.
But we weren't close to spending some money.
No.
If.
But he didn't bring it up.
Yeah, he just didn't say.
Nope.
And, and here's the thing, you know, he could, he, if he were to work with Ashley and then say, well, these aren't, we, we, we can't work off of these, you know, we now have to do our own.
I suspect that he wouldn't be able to.
No, no, I'm sure he wouldn't be able to, that's not the whole point.
Right, so why even go down that, that?
Yeah, I just, I just think it's, I think he's trying to get away a little bit, we need to come up with a floor plan and a concept before you need to worry about getting to that point. And it shouldn't cost, it's no big deal to come up with a floor plan.
I was a little surprised at the, re-referencing the school because it's.
We didn't talk about that.
No, and, and he's, now he's come up with a price that was totally different than the first time he referenced the school. Um, I did respond to them and you all got a copy of it, basically saying, we're, we're open-minded, but.
Oh, I didn't see the response, was that, oh, this afternoon?
We're open-minded and I said, but this is a huge demolition that's gonna happen there versus if you do it at the ball field.
Right.
I'll be sup, you know, I'll be interested to see how it all works out.
What your, what your conceptual.
Yeah, so it'll be, but anyway, uh, and I, you know, we'll see about the library, I, you know, my, I'd give that a fifty-fifty coin toss. But we still need to know it both ways, with and without. So, anyway.
But to me, almost, I mean, with the library, maybe, and especially, I mean, like you was saying, he's gonna put a five-foot frostbowl in, he might as well have a foundation. So if you're gonna do that, you're almost be better off, more of a, if you can't do a daylight basement as a walkout, maybe something like a split level. So you could have that three-step up, three-step down or whatever, to have the library down and the town office up. Then you could utilize all that.
But then.
Pay for it anyway.
Oh, I, we don't have to do it at ADA, build it, if we do a new build.
I don't know, I, it didn't seem, I think we did, which I was kind of.
Because it almost seems, I mean, you know. It would be nice to have it on one floor so that that's never, ever an issue.
That's what, like, the Sonic Hall apartments work's good, because you can drive to one level or the other level. There are stairs, but you can, you can park it either way.
So we're really back at square one, as far.
Feels like, yeah, it might be a little bit.
If that's what. Is there any alternatives to a different contractor or something that may be willing to jump in and?
I can start looking, I don't.
I mean, I, I just don't see it as a big project.
I mean, in, in, the, the Abby Fowler, throwing that out there, and you wonder where he's thinking, I mean, again, he had talked about giving it back to us for a dollar.
Yeah, that part, I mean, he's been pretty clear about that, but I don't, I, the original quote, and this is before there's any talk of the library minus the library, so maybe he had included it, but. He had, he had speculated, he was gonna be north of like three hundred and fifty thousand.
And that was demolition, that was demolition.
Basically, whatever you don't use goes away, it's all seeded, it looks nice, it's finished.
Right.
Okay, um, but then, in this, in this most recent, he said under three, so they're, they're, now they're with a library.
We're back to renovating and not.
I mean.
Well, either way, you're gonna, you're gonna dispose of three quarters of it, cause you don't have that much building.
So I still am amazed that, I mean, so, I don't, that might be a viable thing.
So, so maybe we need to meet with him again and be more clear and say, what are we talking about here? Or is that something we don't wanna discuss, the Abby Fowler?
I, I said we're open.
Personally, I would just, I think we have enough town-owned property. I would love to see it on a tax base, not town-owned. When we already have property that we know would work. That's my thing about.
I don't disagree with that, I just, if, if it worked, if he, if he came in and said, okay, we can build this here for two-twenty, and if we build it up the ball field, it's gonna be two-fifty. Okay, why? Well, and he explains why, and then, alright, so I would listen to all that, I'm just, I'm open-minded. Would I rather, if everything is equal, would I rather take on another piece of property? No, why, why would we?
Right, right.
But, yeah, he made it sound like it was gonna be a solution to our problem.
It would have to be a substantial reduction to, when you start talking about the tax base that you're gonna have.
Yeah, and we, you know, we don't really need that some of this.
There's a lot of maintenance up there.
Yeah, there's a football field up there, you have to mow that.
That's a little piece of it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of plowing up there.
So it'd have to be a very attractive number, but that, I'm, I'm open-minded. I think we really are. But it's just not at all the, I thought we were headed in the right direction.
Right, everything changed, every, that's exactly right. I mean, he didn't throw that out the first time.
I will call him, because I have talked to him a couple times, and just see if, maybe just a communication thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, uh, he wished that he had told us, "Gee, I'll proceed, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a cost associated." That's fine, we just need to know what it's gonna be.
Right, exactly. And we didn't talk about costs, and I, I, we shut up.
Well, it turns out, I guess.
Yeah. For that.
Yeah, I was under the impression that they already had something on paper, anyway.
I was under the impression he could do something as sophisticated as what True Value was doing, quite easily.
Right.
Well, I would think.
Yes.
Again, not something you're gonna build by, you know, but at least, say, "Here, here's kinda what it would look like, and if you give us the green light, we'll make real plans."
Right, then it's gonna cost you.
Then you're gonna spend some money.
Right, it's part of the build cost, right, are the plans.
Right.
You know, the, the...
I think we're all on the same page.
Right, 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 okay. Okay.
Alright.
And...
I guess, well, the one thing, if, I, I would get, I would say to Bridie, yeah, start looking for other sources, 'cause we are really quickly running out of time. We need, we don't need functional blueprints, but we do need a proposal that we can put before the, the town.
Right.
And if that's, costs a little bit of money, that's fine. I don't expect the, you know, the big plumbing, electricity.
Right.
No, we'll, we'll list them. We'll list the costs, you know.
Yeah, we wanna know basically what it's gonna cost.
It has to be all in there.
Plus or minus ten percent, or whatever.
Yeah, but I mean, conceptually, to start with, you just need a floor plan. I mean, correct, don't spend a lot of time, effort, and money coming up with a big vision of what the building's gonna look like, until you at least got it laid out to, this is where things are gonna be.
Right.
And then start worrying, alright, then you want that.
I mean, I would, I would imagine that they have, I mean, you built some huge buildings.
Oh, yeah.
They must have had at least sophistication that True Value has.
Yes, I, I, I think so. I think so.
But I think, I think all, True Value's usually like a, a visual program.
Is that right? I don't know what they're using. I have no idea.
But in terms of, rather than him going to her and then coming back to her?
I know, that doesn't make, that doesn't...
Okay.
Yeah.
And... I, now there's the under correspondence. That was the big one for the Town Manager Report. We can move to...
Okay.
Road Commissioner. I have too many papers. Basically, the Road Commissioner... What is it? I've got Dammie or some bear. I don't, well, hating. I've talked to Roundy's again. We were supposed to start McPeters. This week, it's not happening till next Monday. Athlete swears that that will be happening on Monday. I was supposed to have a new, um, we talked about the fact that we're gonna do two miles of East Sangaville reclaim and base. I wanted her to draw that out, you know, contract, so we could sign it. I did not receive it today. I will taste her tomorrow. But same prices that we'd seen before, just have that on. And she was checking with the reclaim guy, and she said she could get started in the next two weeks. Next one. I haven't moved on the flying road. I've got to go out there and market and get some people to give me some quotes. Brush cutting, Zach Herrick started brush cutting for us. Got three days into it and decided that it was gonna be cost prohibitive to go and do every road that way. He's thinking about, do we wanna do, have what you had to do before? And can use his chipper and chip stuff back? What he's going about, he says, "It's way too labor expensive and..."
Oh, yeah, it's all gonna be picked up.
It's all gonna be picked up, so he's wondering how much we want to put into that. I haven't seen a bill yet, so I don't know how expensive.
Didn't we, sorry, didn't we agree what, what he was gonna get paid per day to do what he was doing? And now that he's realized it's too expect, too...
Well, you don't get much done per day, so you think he's saying?
Yeah, okay, gotcha, okay.
It's taking a long...
Right, but the bill shouldn't be any more than...
No, he didn't quote it...
Your per day won't be, but you're...
No, no, I get it, I understand, I understand. Yeah, 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 okay, okay, gotcha. So he's worked for three days. Okay, okay, got it. So, we just don't want any surprises, I mean...
Right.
Oh, I didn't wanna be surprised, it's all done, there's a lot of rock.
Yeah. I was looking at Silver Smills.
It's horrible.
And he was looking at it, and he said, "Can I chip it?" And I said, "Well, I don't know, let them talk about it, we'll talk about it."
Well, the biggest thing with that is, um, he's got, it's gotta be cleaned up.
Yeah.
You can't leave debris in the road.
Can't blow it under the ditch and...
And, and that method is not, uh, it's not very, uh, it's not very pleasing to the eye. And so if you start doing areas that are, for lack of a better term, residential, where a person's actually maintaining... Yeah, you can't go by anything that's, and, you know, start taking lens off. It looks, it really looks medieval. But, uh, but it does a really, really good job on just traditional brush that's maybe five feet high, and, you know, bigger round, and, you know.
Be it either a skid steer with a sweeper, or a guy with a power broom, that went down throwing to keep whatever's in the road, or a foot and kick it for some of it.
Yeah, uh, it was different, we did it in the wintertime, everything was frozen. And he did a lot of high trees, which I would discourage him from doing much of that, because it, it, now, that, like I said, it was frozen, so when you hit a maple or a beech limb with that grinder, it just shattered it, and it went everywhere. And there were big pieces the size of a, of a man's arm laying in the road. So obviously, you can't have that.
Well, you gotta have something to take it out of the road.
Right.
That's my point.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I don't wanna discourage him to doing it, because...
Labor-intensive, but...
Right, you can't leave anything in the road that, of that size.
Right. But it's gotta be done.
Yeah.
We gotta do something. Even all these ones that you're talking about, if you don't hit it with a grinder and pay him to clean it out of the road afterwards, then you're gonna pay an exterminator, or I'm using that because of that type of business, but you're gonna pay somebody to come over with a bucket truck and cut it, and then chip it and get it out of the road.
Yep.
So either way, there's a cost associated.
Yeah, I know, just last time, um, Lois said they, he didn't clean up, that he wouldn't do it. Now, maybe he will do it now, or maybe he'll team up with somebody who will do it. But, uh, that was, it was, the last time we did it, it wasn't an option to have cleanup. That's all.
He wasn't cleaning it out?
Correct. Well, according to the Town Manager.
Right, okay.
But he, but on the low-lying stuff, you didn't really even need any cleanup. It worked beautifully.
And is that what he's using now to do what he's doing?
No, he was going out and just picking up all the lowdowns and the...
And putting them in a truck and hauling them off?
Yeah.
Now, would that work? I've got three or four of those on my road. That's, you know, he did, I think you should be able to with...
He told me he could take care of that in about twenty minutes. He just didn't take a chainsaw, went out to look, and he said, "If I had, I'd get it done." So we'll get that done.
But then we got that...
But we've got other places with it.
We got the cemetery that's still a heap of debris.
Yep.
That's gonna be a tractor or something with a thong, I mean, that's a lot of...
Yeah, or somebody like Toby with a...
I'll call John Douglas. I just got confirmation that we can dump that stuff up, up on, uh...
There's a guy, no idea.
Hazy Grace.
There's a guy on Facebook in Abbott Monson that's been advertising. He's got a Mack pulp truck with a big steel liner in the body, running around picking up stuff. So he may be somebody as well. I have no idea who it was, but I've seen, I've seen that a couple times.
I've even seen that, so... I have talked to Zach to give me a quote about removing the playground equipment. I've talked to Reggie Moore about perhaps mowing the landfill. He doesn't know if he has the equipment, he's gonna look at it. If he doesn't, he had three names he gave me that...
What'd you get for a price to do it last year?
Up on, um, I can't remember what the price was, but he didn't do it, so I never...
Find the price and let me know.
Okay.
You got a price from the guy last year, and he, then he didn't do it?
And then he didn't do it.
Never do that.
And he's the guy we're hoping to do it this year?
No.
Oh.
No. No, we didn't start there. And, let's see, striping. Lucas Striping is going to do the regular striping down here. I'm still waiting for Roundy's to finish McPeters. I thought that that would be the best order of things. Lucas confirmed that they'd do it for the price they quoted us last year, which was twelve cents a, a foot, and would like to do it soon, if we could just get...
So are they holding off on downtown?
No, that's a different crew.
Oh, 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 so they don't wanna do it at the same time?
No.
Oh, oh, so that's not an issue?
No.
So, you want the phone number?
I do.
Michael Nice. And he's advertising insured, going around picking up brush debris, log stumps. He's writing Abbott.
That's good.
And he has somebody that's insured to cut trees.
Sounds like the perfect guy.
Yeah.
Possibly could be.
Might even be our brush guy.
Very well could be.
Good job, Dale.
I will, I'll add.
Wonder if you'd design a building?
I think that covers most of our...
So, was that on Facebook?
Yeah.
What, does it just come across your screen?
No, it's like, buy-sell places.
Oh.
So he advertised in one of those groups.
Oh, I see.
So that's how I see it.
Okay, sorry.
On Facebook?
No, I'm not on Facebook.
Okay, uh, Correspondents, MRC.
Okay. Here's an email from MRC. They have some major issues. And it says, "Dear MRC members, as you are aware, the Coastal Resources of Maine plant was unable to secure a loan of fourteen-point-seven million from its existing bondholders, and is continuing to pursue a needed additional round of funding to support plant improvements and cash flow. The municipal review committee has been informed by Coastal Resources that should the financing come through, it won't be soon enough to meet current expenses, and they must temporarily suspend operations tomorrow."
They're... Temporarily is not, is not...
So at the end of the day, everything's going to landfill now?
Everything's going to Norwich Walk.
Yep. Well, this is, well, this is why I said we need to talk about that, because that is what the MRC's telling you.
Mm-hmm, and that's what Jack Kluki's telling me.
But Jack Kluki also said that anything that couldn't go...
He was letting go.
No, he was landfilling themselves.
Yeah, right, that's true.
So... Is Jack now sending all of, all trash going to Dover's landfill?
You mean all of our trash? Sangaville's trash?
Every trash, anything that goes to Hannah. He can't take anything to Fiberite anymore.
So it'd be Guilford, or any, anybody that's a part of that. All of that Fiberite material now is rapidly filling up your landfill.
I see, okay.
They will all go to Perk, because Perk isn't part of the solution anymore.
He told me most of it's going to Norwich Walk, but he didn't say that, that landfilling.
Well, I mean, he sat right here and told us that before, and they weren't using Norwich Walk, everything was going to their own landfill.
But I called immediately to say, you know, "Are we gonna have a trash backup issue here? Are you gonna stop taking our trash, you know, whatever we're doing?"
Oh, he can.
And he said, "Well, he can, it's going to Norwich Walk."
I, well, and I mean, 'cause this, this and everything else, I mean, we, we talked before, we really need to get a copy of that contract.
I have a copy of that contract.
'Cause that whole thing needs to be, the way we read that, we're supposed to be part of the board, that we've never met.
The way I read it, I mean, you could have legal look at it, I mean...
I think we need to have a legal opinion as to whether that contract is still valid. It looks like we were supposed to have representation. We've never had representation.
As far as I know, never.
No.
No. We certainly currently don't have representation.
No.
We have no voice in any, anything that's being done down there.
If, if that contract is void, we...
Then we have no contract.
We need to know that.
Right.
Well, we need to know if that, if our liability is void.
That's what I mean.
Ah, yeah.
Well, I know, you said contract, but I wanna make sure.
Well, our liability, I believe, is brought about through that contract, but I could be wrong.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's where it's spelled out.
Correct.
Right, right.
But we haven't had any input in running that facility.
No.
And still don't.
No.
No.
Now, they told us that we could leave, uh, this year if we wanted to, and we wouldn't have to restart the...
Clock.
The clock according to the contract, uh, and then the price went back up. But, um, we really need to understand what, what's at stake here with this thing. I get the sense this could unravel.
Very quickly. This isn't, this is no longer a thirty, forty-year problem.
You know, maybe even not a three- or four-year problem, it could be.
Wow.
But what I'm really struggling with is if the MRC and everything is supposed to be about recycling, and that was the whole thing about Coastal, why is everybody, and I know it's dollars, but that's not a very good reason to send everybody's trash to landfill. Why aren't they negotiating to get, take all of our trash back to Perk? That they've been doing for years. That doesn't, I'm confused by that, other than dollars and cents.
Right, right. That's a really valid question.
'Cause I mean, it's one thing to have to send certain things, but now the floodgate is open and it's all gone.
Alright, I will get out the contract. I'm going to send it to each of you. I think we all need to review it, get a list of questions, but I don't wanna...
That's perfect. I mean, that's exactly the way I would do that, I think.
So then I go to the...
Yep, then you will be able to...
Legal and say, "Okay, here are our questions, can you help us?"
Here, here are our goals.
But I wouldn't, even right now, you choose the MRC and a question, you could simply ask them the question as far as, "Is Perk an option, why are we landfilling?" Just to get a response. I mean, you wanna politically correct here out of Herbage, but...
Yeah.
I can do that as well.
Okay. Anything more on this?
Yeah, okay, that's discouraging.
Request for additional agenda items?
Well, I have an executive session on here. I don't think we need it if we want to discuss what Sue Pilgrim has been telling me about our employee versus contract in terms of our stipend employees. We can, we can just discuss that.
I...